Broadcast has been set.
Good evening. The time is now five oh six P M. I would like to call to order the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm the Chair of this committee and the District Four Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. We will now have introductions of committee members with board members, starting with board members, administration staff, board office staff, and all other guests.
Hi, my name is Judy McInnes Murray. I'm a member of the OBFA Committee and I am Chair of the Ward.
Hello. I just want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day because that is today. Give yourself a huge hug. My name is Jocelyn Rout and I am a board member here, serving on the OBFA Committee.
Other board members, feel free to introduce yourself at this time.
Hi, I'm Lolita E. Walker. I am the Vice Chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I'm excited to be here tonight. Thank you so much for serving.
Good evening. I echo my colleagues' comments. Happy Valentine's Day and I am excited to be here. I am Dr. Zephora Miller. I am the board member for District Five.
And I think I have with my other board member here as well.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brandon Jackson, Board Member, District Six. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Right, right. I believe we saw, I saw rain here as well.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Rivera Forbes and I'm the forty-third student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I am also a member of the OBFA Committee. I also want to apologize for my camera being off. It is due to personal reasons. I'm excited for all the work we're going to do tonight for the students.
Wonderful. Now we'll have introductions from the administration and then board office staff and any other guests. Thank you.
Boardhouse Superintendent.
Hi, good, good evening. Quincy Boyd, Chief of Staff.
Good evening, Kristy Murphy Baldwin, Chief of Human Resources.
Hi, everyone. Andy Zuckerman, Chief Information Officer.
Good evening, Sharaska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Lisa Howell, Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Michelle Winston, Director, Internal Audit.
Good evening.
Yep.
Go ahead, Darnell.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening. This is Darnell Henderson, General Counsel.
Good evening, Rashine Davis, Chief of School Support and Leadership.
Good evening, Sam Stefano, Director of Building Services.
Good evening, Siobhan Smith, Director of Budget and Management Services.
Good evening, everyone. Trent Albaum, an Associate Superintendent for Special Education.
Good evening, Kyra Libby, here for Dr. Strater, Accountability.
Good evening, Patrice Portolano, Food Nutrition Services. I'm representing Joan Shorter.
Good evening, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
All right, if that's everyone, we'll have board office staff. Thank you.
Hello, Revel D. Fitzpatrick, He Him His. I'm the Director for the Board Office.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. Annie Ellis, Administrative Secretary, Board Office.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We are going to do our best to get out of here so you can enjoy your Valentine's Day. So with that being said, tonight, this committee is going to decide on whether the requested amendments will advance to the full board. And we will, the board will make a final decision on the complete budget with all of the incorporated amendments. So Ms. Ellis, will you please call the roll?
Excuse me, Chair Adam Stafford. Michael Swett has his hand up. Our Parliament Chairman.
Yes.
There are five members. Is that, excuse me, is that plus the Chair of the Board?
Yes.
Yes.
That makes six?
Yes.
And how many members of the Board are present who are not on the committee?
Two, three. There are three.
So all in all, you might have a, well, all in all, you have a quorum of the Board here, right?
Correct. But the Board, but all, all, only the members of the committee vote.
Okay, what are the other Board members?
I'll just be clear. So we have five members of the committee and we need a, we need three members to have a quorum and we've reached a quorum.
There's a, the question, a couple of questions. One is on the vote and that's based on six. And the other is, if you have members of the Board who are not members of the committee, then you have to consider the Open Meetings Act. You say the, the other three Board members who are not on the committee are not going to vote.
Right.
Okay, or are they just going to observe?
They're giving a presentation on their amendment.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure we're not in trouble. So they're just giving a presentation on their amendments. Okay.
We're good?
So Parliament Chairman, we should, we should, we're good then?
Right, we can move on.
Yeah, you should be all right. Would you, I'm just being careful. When you have eight members of the Board in one place for any reason whatsoever, and according to the Open Meetings Act, the Board has convened. So those three members who are not on this committee, I just have to be careful. You know, they present, give their presentations, but not participate in the consideration of things and voting.
No, typically, we don't do that. So Board members are just visiting Board members for a committee meeting. They don't, they will not vote. Ms. Ellis, please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Dr. Harris? Mrs. McInnes Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Rout?
Here.
Ms. Rivera Forbes?
Here.
We have four in attendance.
We have a quorum present. May I have a motion to adopt the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting agenda?
Motion.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting agenda.
On my end, excuse me, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
My computer did not, I did not register who's second. I heard Mrs. Rout, but I did not hear the second.
Mm-hmm.
McInnes Murray.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three and January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes?
I move to approve the December twenty-third. What did you say?
December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three and January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, I move that we approve the December twenty-three and the January twenty-fourth committee minutes.
Second, Jocelyn Rout.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three and January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion passes. The agenda is adopted. So we have no registered public comment speakers for this evening and we have no public comment from our labor partners. So what we'll do now is we are going to have a brief update from Chief Howell on the Superintendent's FY two thousand and twenty-five Proposed Operating Budget and the Amendment Process Follow-Up. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Lisa Howell, the Chief Financial Officer, to present her update on the FY twenty-five Revenue Assumption and High Level Overview of the Budget Amendment Process Follow-Up. After that, I will introduce each amendment by topic in numbered order. If in attendance, the board member who sponsored the amendment will have one minute to present and/or ask questions again if they are in attendance. So we'll begin with Ms. Howell. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen and we all get it.
I can't hear you, Chief Howell, that well.
All right. Just bear with me for a moment and it does this. Bear with me one moment. Share the role screen. All right, good evening, everyone. So we're going to just provide a brief update reflecting the Governor's Budget that was released on January eighteenth and followed by the MSDE State Aid Calculations for two thousand and twenty-five. So you see a bunch of numbers on the screen. I just want to kind of just highlight for you at a, at a very high level what you're looking at. So the first column represents the twenty-four approved. The next column was the revenue assumptions for unrestricted revenue. This is unrestricted revenue. The next column is that what was reflected in the twenty-five proposed budget. The third column there now reflects the updated revenue assumptions based off of the Governor's Budget and the aligned information that we received from MSDE. The next set of columns reflects the change in the requested budget versus the prior year, two thousand and twenty-four approved. And then the last two columns reflect the change in the requested budget versus the proposed budget. And that's really what we're going to focus on today. So those last two columns really got to be the highlight. So as you know, we received the majority of our funding from the state and county tied to the blueprint state aid programs highlighted there. Foundation, compensatory education, English learners, special education, comparable wage index, and pre-kindergarten. In addition to that, we also received major state aid funding for transportation as well as it's a, it's a blueprint transition grant amount that we receive funding for as well. And then also our non-public placements for students with disabilities. So that's what's reflected in the other major state aid category, that last row there. So all in, when you're looking at that, the far two right columns, our revenue in the requested budget based off of the updated state aid document is increasing five point three million dollars relative to what we had in the proposed budget. That's primarily driven by just different student counts relating to our, some of our different student categories for EL, Special Ed, and Pre-Kindergarten. The student counts are slightly different as well as the impact of wealth equalization. And it was shared before that that is a key component in those state aid funding formulas. And so depending on the wealth data for the county that's released in December, that will then shift how much of the state aid funding shifts from one category to another. But for the most part, what you're seeing here is an impact of the student counts being different than what we assumed in the proposed budget. The other major state aid decrease is driven by two factors, the, well, primarily one factor, the assumption that we had around transportation ended up being less because of the Consumer Price Index assumption that ended up being finalized in the Governor's Budget. So that was a decrease. So net-net, our state aid funding is not too far off from where we thought, but still five point three million dollar increase. Going to the next bucket that you see there, the major change from the proposed cycle is relating to the county contribution. So that next line there is a combination of board, county, and federal sources. But that decrease is due to the assumed county contribution at this point in time and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail. So this slide here captures a summary of the change in the county contribution. So again, we want to kind of focus on the far right-hand columns. So it still has the approved, the proposed, what's now reflected based off of the updated state aid information and then the variance, what changed between the approved and what's changing between the requested and proposed. So I'm really focusing on that last column. So as you see there, that, and this is just the county contribution towards the blueprint funding. And keep in mind, the blueprint funding that we get from the county is for restricted and unrestricted. So that four two million dollar increase that you see, fourteen point six million, six twenty-three million, is tied to both the restricted and unrestricted portion of our blueprint funding programs. It's not a shift in overall revenue. It's just shifting who's paying for it. So again, there's a state share and a county share. So in the proposed budget, we assumed more of that was going to be funded by the state. But once the county wealth data became available, it shifted more of that responsibility to the county. So that's an increase overall of fourteen point six eight three million. I want to draw your attention down to the middle section there under Energy and Telecom. And this is being presented in a little bit of a different way because I wanted to be able to articulate the uses of the energy and telecom revenue and how we reflected it in our budget. So as you know, the blueprint legislation earmarks the funding needs to be allocated. Seventy-five percent of the funding is allocated to the schools. For some of our restricted programs, that percentage is a hundred percent. So there's very specific requirements in terms of the uses of the blueprint funding. So by default, the energy and telecom revenue that we've received in the past has been used to cover other uses within our current budget. Number one, a portion of that funding has been used to cover Phase One of the blueprint school's construction. Number two, we have non-blueprint grants that are funded by the county. For example, we receive a federal grant for our junior ROTC program. There's the federal component, but there's a local matching component that's paid for by the county. And so we've covered that out of the energy telecom piece. And then we have other academic and school supports, which makes up the difference that we utilize the energy and telecom funding for in the past. And that has included an impact grant that we received for Crossland High School CTE program that is resulting from MGM. That also includes funding that we receive that helps to support some additional academic programs and services that's not fully funded by the blueprint. That includes mental health supports, services for students with disabilities, and other academic programming. So all in right now, what's being considered, what's being reflected in the requested budget or the proposed budget from OMB County, the reduction of energy and telecom would no longer be an additional amount coming into the school system. Now, as you continue down to the next section, you'll see that in their proposal, it does also include that they will be paying for the school construction financing of twenty-seven million dollars relating to Phase Two of P three. So all in, compared to the proposed budget, the total county contribution is going down about twenty-two point seven million dollars. This last one here just captures a look at the comparison of what the budget would look like with the energy and telecom and without. So the first column captures currently what's being proposed by OMB with the county and it reflects the blueprint contribution of nine hundred and nine million dollars. We know that the Phase Three of the payment, excuse me, Phase Two of P three, the payment is twenty-seven million dollars. However, as you recall, in the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, in an effort to help solve the budget gap for two thousand and twenty-five, we plan to pay part of that payment early in two thousand and twenty-five. So the impact for twenty-five is fourteen million dollars. So the difference between the sixty-four million dollars that we're losing and the fourteen million dollars that we had in our budget to take care of the Phase Two, P three payment, that net difference is a fifty million dollar impact. So as we prepare to go into this phase of finishing up the requested budget that will be transmitted to the county by March first, we have a deficit to solve for. We're still in the process of working with the local county government to determine what that final number is going to be. But this is the latest information that we have now and just wanted everyone to be aware of where we currently stand. Any questions before we proceed? All right. So with that being said, oh, actually, I see. Chair Adam Stafford has her hands.
Yes, thank you so much for that breakdown and I do appreciate all of the efforts of the administration to keep those dollars here with the school system. I wanted to just make sure that I was understanding, we, in our budgeting, were we counting the telecommunications and energy tax towards the county's maintenance of effort towards the school system? Or has that traditionally not been counted toward that cost?
So prior to blueprint, we received funding from the county that included two components. Maintenance of effort, which is the same per people amount times the student count for that year, as well as energy and telecom. That was the total county contribution that we've received prior to blueprint. Beginning in two thousand and twenty-three, the blueprint legislation requires the county to contribute the greater of maintenance of effort or local share, whichever one is larger. For us, local share ended up being a larger amount. So we've been getting the local share plus energy and telecom on top of it. So the two combined equal the total county contribution since two thousand and twenty. And that's what we assumed in the proposed budget as well.
Thank you for that clarification. Board Member Rout.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. Can you please highlight the areas of the budget that in preparing for this potential change that we will be able to shift? Are there, are there any areas that we could explore? Or are we really at a time where we just need all of the income that we have continued to receive from the county and the state? Thank you.
Having an impact. Go ahead.
No, 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 go right here.
I was just going to simply say that, you know, given an impact of fifty million dollars, that's not something that is easily absorbed without it having an impact across the board. When you look at our budget in aggregate, particularly on the unrestricted side, because that's where the impact is going to be felt, eighty-five percent of our budget consists of payable and benefits. Obviously, we have a substantial part of our discretionary costs as well that goes towards supporting programs and operations. And so when you're having, when you're facing a potential deficit or an impact of fifty million dollars, it's going to impact the people, the programs, and your operations. So we will be working with, you know, our leadership to determine what those levers may need to be in order to ensure that we're closing the gap. So as we prepare to go through the amendments, keep in mind, our revenue, our top-line number is not going to get any higher. So any proposed amendments will require some other reduction in order to be able to support that change to the proposed budget.
And Board Member Rout, just to, to kind of even dive in more specifically around your question, we haven't gone through the exercise of, of what a alternative budget would look like. Unfortunately, I've, I've been through this exercise before in my previous district with a larger budget, larger cut. But I broke it up into two years, you know, twenty million dollars one year, twenty million dollars the next year. If we're talking about, you know, sixty, sixty-four million. And even if they make the availability payment of twenty-seven million, that still leaves a thirty-six million dollar cut, which is extremely, extremely significant. I have chosen to, we were prepared to go through that exercise, but I have chosen to wait until the vote. And we have to be very careful about how we articulate this as a district. What we don't want is employees to get spooked and to leave. So we will do the work if it comes to that. But right now, we, we haven't chosen exactly what that's going to look for or articulate it. But we're prepared to do the work if we have to.
Okay, thank you very much for that update. Chief Howell, was there anything else that you'd like to share on this topic before we move forward with the budget amendments?
No, the only other item that I was going to point out relating to in preparation for going on the budget amendments is that we have members across the, across these, with the divisions with representation from either the chiefs or the designee. So to the extent that there needs to be any clarity, we want to make sure that we have the folks here available to be able to respond to that in addition to the written response of that.
Okay, thank you very much and I really truly do appreciate all of the chiefs and directors for being here this evening. Okay, with that being said, we will now move on to the introduction of the budget amendments. I will introduce each amendment by topic in numbered order. If in attendance, the board member who sponsored the amendment will have one minute to present and/or ask questions. OBFA members, we are going to start with one round for discussion of each amendment. We'll have a second round if needed. There will be two minutes for discussion. All right, and I just want to just make a note, this is, since I've been on the Board, these are the most amendments that I've ever seen. But it's also the year that we've had the biggest deficit that I've ever seen. So that's just one thing to consider. And there have been years where no one has submitted amendments except for a few of us. So I'm just, I think that this is a reflection of increased board participation and reflecting the needs of our community. So I just want to thank all of your board members for the, the time that you've put in to developing these amendments. We're going to start with number one, and that's bullying, support, prevention, and intervention, school support, and leadership. Dr. Zephora Miller, please present your amendment or ask questions. Your time will be one minute and please please help us with the timing and we'll begin now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This amendment is, I strongly felt about, felt the need to put it in after doing some work with the Policy and Governance Committee in looking at the bullying policy. One of the areas that we uncovered was that, you know, we, we do have a strong emphasis in anti-bullying in the school system. You have systems in place for the prevention of bullying and to address bullying. But one of the things that we really need to take a look at are processes in the schools and making sure, particularly in the middle schools, and we see a rise in bullying, particularly from the middle schools. So this would be requesting a position for someone to focus on the middle schools and really look at not just the processes that are in place and helping doing professional development at a school level and supporting the middle schools at the school level so that if there are any things that they can help streamline the process so when they bring kids, the students back to school, the students feel safe in that environment. But one area that I really want focused on with this position is addressing the students who are exhibiting the bullying behavior because they also need support. So in order to see that students have a safe environment, I felt that it was important that not only use our supports for the students who has gone through the bullying, which is very, very important, but there's also another child who is exhibiting bullying behavior that we really need to address that and to put some programs and practices in place so they too can be able to handle and manage their emotions. They can begin to acquire tools so that they can find other ways to, to address their emotions and have a sense of empathy feeling and showing empathy for others.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I wanted to At this time, I wanted to, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment bullying, support, prevention, and intervention to be advanced for full consideration by the full board?
I'm moved that we, it, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
I move that we advance the bullying position for consideration before the full board.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Board member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. I just wanted to clarify that I think it's very important that we are prioritizing the need to help our students in this county with bullying because bullying is very large right now. And our students deserve a safe environment to have the education of high quality and equity. So it's important that we start taking the task on and taking active measures to protect our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller, what is the fiscal note for this amendment? Dr. Miller, this question is for you. What is the fiscal note for this amendment?
I am pulling it up as we speak. Can you give me a second?
Sure, no problem. And then this question is from Ms. Dr. Davis. Go ahead.
The amount that was submitted was around a hundred ninety-seven thousand. The amount that's been bound into the budget office is closer to two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay, and just so that I'm understanding, this is for a countywide position, for one position?
Correct, to support middle schools. And the total amount does not include just the position if the staff member needs to acquire materials or in establishing the program, some funding was allocated to that.
So I, my next question is for Dr. Davis. Do we have, what do we have for middle school around le- leadership support around bullying, like what already exists?
Um, yes, I provided that in my response to the amendment, which is pretty detailed. We currently have two positions at the district level. A director who focuses on bullying and prevention and provides for, uh, support to schools, to school members, to counselors, and other behavior related staff. And then we also have a second position, and I believe which is a coordinator, so that do this as a part of their work. So we do currently have two, two positions at central office in the Student Services Department that focus on this.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Miller, could you just share i- if you wanted to make an adjustment to your amendment? Or if you feel that your disposition would be different than what we already have? And excuse me, I want to just apologize. I want to make sure that we recognize Dr. Harris is here with us this evening, our vice chair. And that was my last question, and I'll defer to him next.
So right now, we have, as Dr. Davis says, two individuals countywide. But the numbers continue to increase middles- in the middle school as the staff members mentioned during the Policy and Governance Committee. And this individual would be dedicated to ensuring that they're working with the middle schools. And if you look at the data even na- nationally, bullying is increasing in the middle school level. And the goal is to have means in which we are preventing and also addressing the behavior of the individuals who are engaged in bullying behaviors is wh- is where I saw the gap in terms of as a system. So what are we doing for that child? And being proactive, so when this child has been accused of bullying, what are we doing so that there are intense interventions so that we can start changing the behavior of the child and actually dealing with the underlying issues that may, may lead to this?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. And then Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And happy Valentine's Day. My, my question will be quick. It's for you, Dr. Davis, and your response to outline that you wrote out a bully advisory council to increase awareness and utilize the expertise of staff across the district. It goes on through the sentence. Can you talk to me a bit about that advisory council, when that was spun up? And do you have any data points to speak to it?
I'm not sure the, of the start date, but it is an active committee, and I could get to you the data points. I didn't know that that was needed in the, in the amendment description, but I can get that to you.
Yeah, I don't think it was needed in the amendment description. That's just a, a follow-up question to the information that was provided to speak to Dr. Miller's point. If there, well, there is an increase, and we continue to see increase within the middle school level. I'd like to see how that vehicle, that integration strategy is helping us to get to where we need to go. But thank you, that.
Yeah, and I can get some, I can get some information from the Student Services Office. And I also know that our restorative practices office that I didn't mention directly in the amendment. But that's also an office that provides support. So for those students who would be, you know, showing bully behaviors, they could have that as a support to take them through that restorative practice, restorative circle type of support. So I can get you data on that.
Thank you.
Chair Mickens Murray and board member Ralph next.
Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford. My question is for Dr. Davis. You said you have two full-time staff members in the Sasser Building. Are they coordinators? Or can you just quickly just give us a synopsis of their role? And I believe we have two hundred and seven schools. And how many middle schools do we have? Because I don't know that right now.
Um, I think there's about forty when we count middle school and K eight together because we count them under the middle schools office as well because they have this six through eight grade band there. So roughly forty. And the, it's a supervisor position, so one is the supervisor and one is a coordinator for the two, and they're located at Oxon Hill.
Okay, I know I don't have much time, but I think if, I think with the escal- escalation of the bullying and the events and the incidents that are happening at the middle school level, I think it's incumbent upon us to have a coordinator that focuses on middle schools. I understand the supervisor's role, but I also understand supervisor's role is split. They are not doing the technical stuff. And so that says to me, we have one person really that's dealing with two hundred and seven schools and the bullying problems. So I just wanted to go and record for that. Thank you.
Board member Ralph.
Uh, thank you so much. Dr. Davis, could you sh- could you help me understand if there's overlap between? You touched on your, the restorative practices and that model because what I do know is that's an evidence-based model that's being disseminated to support restoring relationships with students. Is there overlap? How, how is this, this budget amendment connected directly to? Can you just help me understand that a little bit more?
Um, yes, they're all within the same department under Dr. Faison, all of those positions. And so they do work in tandem to support each other. So none of that work happens in isolation. So when there is need at a school, whether it be through an incident or leader reaching out, asking for help, or the area office asking for help, all of those roles come together to figure out the support that they'll give to the school, and they work together around it.
Is this something that a restorative, one of the restorative practice personnel will be able to just do, support our middle?
Well, they, they provide training to staff as well. So there are staff members who've been trained in restorative practice, and then they receive both support from that member. And I believe there are a few other members on the team. It's not just one person who's supportive around restorative practices. And they also do like train the trainer. So there are people in schools who also have training.
Yeah, so would this role through the, this budget amendment be duplicative of the restorative practices personnel that do the train the trainer model and do the work with the young people and to prevent or, you know, to prevent and or to respond to a situation?
Um, I think that would be one part of it, but what we don't have right now is a specific person just focusing on middle school. So I think that would be the difference. They really take a, a whole district approach and approach, you know, where it's needed. So where they see the incidents happening, where they, they look at the data, they get the behavior data, the incident report data, and they look at that, and then they decide, you know, or reach out to the leader to see how can they help, how can they support? Or if the leader reaches out and asks for help and support, the team will get together. But there's no particular focus right now on just middle school. It's really district-wide.
Thank you so much. Dr. Miller, you have a minute here for a second round.
Sorry, I was just going to add, because I appreciate the question by board member Ralph in terms of duplication, which is something we can't afford to do in a budget crisis. As we went through the services and programs that are offered in the Policy and Governance Committee, this is where we saw a need in terms of seamlessly and cohesively looking at all of the programs in place and really focusing on ensuring that the schools are able to implement with fidelity. And so this person will really be going in and ensuring that all of these programs are seamlessly being implemented with fidelity. In vision, this person not to be in the lane of administration, to be more in schools than offices. So focus just on the middle school. And as Dr. Davis, you indicated, this would be specifically to ensure that we start seeing that data of the middle school behaviors, bullying behaviors decreasing, hoping that when they get to high school, that we're not seeing an increase in so there as well.
Thank you. Second round, um, it's round on board member Ralph.
Uh, thank you. Is there, um, I'm just trying to, you know, really understand that one person will be able to reach all middle schools. I think that is my concern. I do think that there, this bullying is, is definitely a need. Specifically, can you help me understand more about cyberbullying? Is that, is this, would it be included in the work?
Yeah, when those cases come up around cyberbullying, it all is treated the same, whether it's something that happens in person or if it's a cyberbully, and we get the bullying report, it goes to the office, and then they dispatch support based on the need or what they see in the incident. But what I will say to you is that, you know, schools have school teams. And they have people like the mental health coordinator, like the counselors that are in the building. Some have social workers, based on what principals have, you know, purchased out of their budget based on the needs of their schools. So there are people at the school level. And what I would say is these, our central office staff really do support the school level people to make sure that they're trained and they have the support that they need. And then, you know, do other preventative things like trainings and, you know, and things like that. But when it comes to, like, I would say, responding to incidents, yes, it's over the two hundred-plus schools. And, you know, we, we try to be proactive, but then also provide intervention where we, when we see the incidents happening.
Thank you. Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. I think what I am looking at is capacity because when I go to the community schools, and I know they have a vast team of community leaders and everyone else in those schools helping. But they also always say that they need additional assistance with the counselors, with the assistance that they have in those schools. What I'm concerned about are the schools that don't have those teams. And I'm concerned that because we keep seeing incidences of middle-aged students, and it's escalating. It's getting worse. It's not getting better. And I think if we can just recognize that if we can put a fix on it now, that it might save us some time and some energy and money in the future. And I think as, as large as the system is, I don't think three people is too many to have, uh, working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And all I'll say here is that, you know, in districts where I've seen successful anti-bullying programs, it really has come from a distributed leadership model where we're doing more of a train the trainer approach, where you're supporting existing personnel with strengthening their capacity to do this work. And so I'm wondering, Dr. Miller, are you open to possibly tabling this and coming back when we meet as a full board to talk with Dr. Davis a bit more about how we could maybe take the funds that you're requesting to possibly support more specific training at the middle school level for our existing counselors, for our existing social workers to help them, you know, go through some evidence-based training so, so that they can build their capacity. Because as we're saying, you know, one person for forty schools that will be challenging, and I don't know that they'll have the type of impact that we're hoping that they will have. Whereas if we invest in more professional development and training around this, around existing individuals that do this work, perhaps that might be, work better.
That's a great question, and it was, it, it's actually in the amendment. I pointed out that this individual will be going in and doing systemic train the trainer intensively at the middle school level, understanding the middle school child, going into the schools and actually doing additional professional development. The whole goal is to build a capacity at the school level. And this individual would, would spend their focus on really targeting these areas with training, training the individuals, whether it's the counselors, also the teachers, but also how to cohesively use those supports, not just I'm training you and you're going back to the school. So you're correct, uh, board member Adam Stafford. The train the train the model is very effective. And this is one of the areas in which this individual will be spending a lot of time doing, and not just training the trainer. Most professional learning is most effective when you monitor implementation. And the way you monitor implementation is going into the schools and actually seeing how it's being done and how it's fitting in within the culture of the school.
Thank, thank you all for that discussion. So right now, it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment bullying, support, prevention, and intervention to be advanced for consideration to the, for the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? I'll, I'm abstaining. I just would like to see us have a more robust discussion on how to amp up our existing supports here. So the motion failed. It needed three votes to pass the motion. So thank you. Uh, we're going to move on now to number two, which is additional FTE assessment and reduction. Vice Chair Walker, you'll have one minute to present your amendment and or ask questions. You may begin now.
Thank you so much. This request is specifically for the superintendent to reassess each additional FTE that's been requested for this year's budget that is over and beyond last year's actuals to determine the opportunity for process optimization, continuous improvement, and of course, cost savings opportunities where they exist. I did have the opportunity to take a look at the response, and what I saw was that there's three hundred and four point five FTEs that's being requested, which does seem substantial. But my question is, if I read it correctly, to say that there's no fiscal impact to that because cost savings have already happened. It just, I'm wondering how we cleared three hundred and four point five. And so what I'm asking you all as a committee to be able to do is, or to consider, is to pass this on to the board so that we could have a broader discussion. Again, my request is to be able to look per position. And is my one minute over? I didn't see it pop up. Was that a comment?
Five seconds.
Okay, well, then that's it. Sorry, I heard something. I just wanted to make sure I was on time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment additional FTE assessment and reduction be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval at the February, at the, yes, to, to, I'm sorry, for recor- for consideration to the full board for approval? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve budget amendment number two, additional FTE assessment to the full board.
Is there any discussion? I just have a question. So just so that I'm clear, this has no fiscal note attached to it. This is just for us to discuss and review.
Yeah, this is actually for the super. Thank you for the question. For clarity, this is no fiscal note attached. It's really to ask the superintendent to go and look and see where cost savings opportunities exist based on a budget that was presented to us for the additional FTEs from last year in the earlier budget discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for, okay, go ahead, Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. I see it as a cost savings, but I also see it as an opportunity to look at all senior. Thank you. I see it as a cost savings, but I also see it as an opportunity to look at all senior staff. So my question is, and it's back to you, Lolita, you are including all staff, right? A central and middle staff, which includes Sasser.
Yes, this is for any additional FTEs that were requested in this budget this year above last year's. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Chair Adam Stafford, it does look like there was work done, so we should have a seamless conversation when it comes to the board. But that's my, that's my ask for the board. Thank you. I mean, for your committee.
Thank you. Chief Howell.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to just clarify one question that Board Member Walker asked around the increase of 304.5 FTEs. There is a budget impact and one of the attachments in there, there's a dollar value tied to each and every single position. There is a section where there was a net increase of one FTE, and there was no impact for that one FTE because cuts were already made to fund those reductions. But everything else is outlined in the response document, position by position, and the dollar value tied to each of it. You may recall when we sat down at the four-by-fours, we categorized all the positions based off of the type of requested it tied to, whether it was the cost of doing business, those are more the school-based positions, whether it's tied to program continuation, so expanding programs that we already have in place where you're adding additional classroom-based positions in order to support an expansion to the next grade, or program improvements. Those are really sort of the incremental asks that are tied to new and different initiatives for 2025. And each one of those provides some clarity around what those position requests are for. One thing that I do want to highlight, and it is in there as well, but it may stick out like a sore thumb, is that there's 41 positions that were requested for our online campus. That's just a shift in funding source. So I want to be clear, we already have an online campus. It's going to continue on. It's been around since we received the COVID relief funds. And it was previously funded by ESAR funds. Now with ESAR funds going away, the program is now a school, and it's going to continue to educate students. And so it's just shifting the existing staffing that was funded by ESAR over to the restricted funds. From unrestricted to restricted, from restricted to unrestricted, excuse me. So it's going from ESAR being funded out of our general operating budget. So, but the details are there. There was a summary, but then there's also a detail that lists out every single position that was.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Walker, did you have?
Yes, for my final one-minute comment. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. I somehow missed that detail. Thank you for the clarity. I will go back and take a look. And if you just note that that is the carryover that's needed to 40, 41 positions, that'd be great. I'll try to remember as well. But thank you very much for that. I'll make sure I take a look as we talk broader as a board.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Additional FTE Assessment and Reduction to be advanced for consideration to the full board. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Aye. Oppose? Abstention? Okay, the motion passes, so we needed three votes to pass the motion. Thank you. So at this, we're going to move on to number three, which is the assessment of non-dairy alternatives and PDCPS. And so I will present my amendment along with my co-sponsor, Vice Chair Walker. Ms. Ellis, please start the timer for one minute. So each year, the USDA spends a billion dollars to reimburse school districts for cow's milk on the National School Lunch Program. Because of widespread lactose intolerant and minority, lactose intolerance in minority students, the milk mandate leads to millions of students getting ill in the classroom, which can make the learning experience more difficult, as well as cause excessive food waste and harm to the environment. Up to 75% of African-American students, 65% of Latinos, and 90% of Asian-American students are lactose intolerant. In our school district of 100, over 130,000 students, our student body is comprised of over 50% of Black students, 37% Latino. And so what Vice Chair Walker and I are recommending for this possible solution or possible amendment is essentially an opportunity for the school system to assess the cost-benefit analysis of adding soy milk as an option for students instead of cow milk. In the school system, we need to calculate that cost, and we're asking for a pilot program to happen in two schools within the county. And Vice Chair Walker, was there anything else we wanted to add? We can talk about it more in the discussion. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, is there any discussion? Board Member Ralph.
Yes, I speak in favor of this budget amendment that comes before us. Given the makeup of Prince George's County, how we are, we are predominantly Black and Brown, and understanding the data that was presented, I do think that a cost-benefit analysis in a pilot program is worth our while for our students who may or may not be able to drink milk. And, you know, with climate change and everything else going on in the world with pesticides, we need to look at other measures to ensure that we are taking care of our whole selves. So I speak in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Then we'll have Chair McInnes-Murray and then Board Member Ray Rivera-Forbes.
Thank you so much. I also just wanted to add, I did see in my brief review of the feedback in response that there is lactose options inside of schools. While I haven't seen that inside of schools, I do want to say that this soy in particular is to add to the nutritional value. As we know that the other milks don't necessarily have the nutritional values that our students absolutely need. So of course, I'm co-sponsoring this, but the goal is for a pilot program so that we can make sure that we can see the impacts for our students, as well as to understand what the cost benefit is. Thank you.
Chair McInnes-Murray.
Thank you. I support this because I am one of the human beings that have dealt with this all of my life. So I can relate. And to give students an option, I think it's a great idea. So I will support it.
Thank you. Board Member Rivera-Forbes.
Thank you, Chair. Will this be in collaboration with the Nutrition Department? Just wondering.
I absolutely.
We hope so. Yes. I was going to say, we absolutely hope so, as well as the Add Soy Act that's being proposed in Congress as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Harris.
Yeah, quickly, I want to speak in favor of this from the perspective of the climate change action at our committee. This also reflects priority number five for us to reduce food waste. So I'm in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chief Howell.
Hello, I just wanted to add a little bit of clarity around this amendment. And we're going to actually fall because the Food and Nutrition Services organization is a separate fund. It's not part of the operating budget that the board approves. So this could certainly be a recommendation for consideration in terms of operations, but it's not part of the operating budget that will be voted on by, on February 22nd. So just be mindful of that and how you, and when and how you want to discuss this on a going-forward basis. It's not going to be part of the amendments that will roll up into an operating budget that you vote on on February 22nd. It's a separate fund.
Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a general question. I didn't know that. So thank you for the clarity on that, Ms. Howell. Ms. Howell, where would you, being unfamiliar, knowing that this is a priority for our Black and Brown children, of which we've identified today, I'm just wondering, how then could we fund it through nutrition? Or where would we be looking inside of our current budget for a pilot program for two schools? I'm just wondering from the financial perspective, what your thoughts are? Because I didn't know that piece about nutrition.
Yeah, what we would probably do, and I'll let Dr. Coleman come in here, the child nutrition falls under him, and they're essentially self-funded. Dr. Coleman, you want to share some insight?
Yes, absolutely. So as it was stated, Food and Nutrition Services is a self-funded entity that also interfaces with our federal government for reimbursement for meals. So hearing this energy around looking at non-dairy options for students, we can certainly take that information back and look at the potential costs of piloting, making this service available for students, as well as looking at the different supply options, because that also has to be considered as well, and trying to move that forward with the funding that is available. So we have a separate funding source within Food and Nutrition Services, and we would use that to help pilot this program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Assessment for Non-Dairy Alternative and PDCPS to be forwarded to the full board for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to number four. This is FTE for Resident Teacher Program Expansion, Teacher Retention. Dr. Miller, please present your amendment and ask any questions. You will have one minute.
Good evening. I am recommending an expansion to the Resident Teacher Program. As we are aware, we are in a teacher shortage. And many of the schools of education's numbers have decreased within the past six years to at a level of 33 and 1/3%, even in the state of Maryland. That being said, that we are recruiting more conditional teachers or teachers who do not have their teacher certification. It costs, according to Learning Policy, $20,000 on average to recruit a teacher. So it's imperative, as we recruit teachers, we retain them. One of the stipulations for retaining a teacher who comes with a conditional certificate is to ensure that they gain their certification. The Resident Teacher Program has been a proven practice and a proven program that have moved teachers from coming in with a conditional certificate and supporting them in order to gain their certification. The numbers continue to increase, so we need additional staff in order to support it.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment FTE for Resident Teacher Program Expansion?
Don't move.
All right, second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Board Member Ralph.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair McInnes-Murray. I do support this budget amendment due to the fact of everything that the maker of the budget amendment, Dr. Miller, shared. You know, we really need to look at building our capacity for all the strategies. We got to throw everything at the wall and see what sticks so that we can really support our educators. And there, you know, we have to, we have to intentionally support our educators. So I definitely am in favor of this budget amendment.
Thank you so much. Dr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am. One question from me. I'm trying to, I lost where I was. So the budget amendment reads that it would be two FTE for sub $280,000. The current, our current, what we're currently doing, it says one FTE, one position for... So, okay, so currently we have one FTE allocated. We want to add two additional. I just need clarification on what we're doing here. I see heads nodding. So additional two. Okay. I follow. Thank you.
I was, I was recommending that we have one professional position, such as in a specialist. And I'll lead that up to the administration to where it falls. And then also an admin assistant, because as the numbers continue to increase, one of the things that for each individual teacher, they have to take a, sometimes a minimum of 30 credit hours. And it's different coursework, and they end up inundated with lesson planning and doing whatever they need to do in order to get ready for the next day of school, and also taking courses at night, that they may lose track of what they need to do. And there needs to be someone who can proactively track these teachers so that we don't lose them from being a conditional teacher to a substitute teacher, and we're back to square one. So we really want to keep them on the track to certification and have someone proactively keeping up with the thousands of teachers that are coming in with conditional certificates. The numbers have skyrocketed within the past few years, and so we want to make sure we don't lose one teacher.
Understood. Thank you. That concludes my question, Chair.
Thank you, Chair McInnes-Murray.
My question is, how are we tracking it today? Because I'm sure that someone is tracking the teachers, I hope. Professional development.
Good evening. Yes, we do track our educators right now in the Resident Teacher Program, as well as the Conditional Educator Program. I think the advocacy is to add additional staff. We currently have one person who is managing that program.
Okay, now I get it. So when I look at this request, and then I looked at the request for the students, for the middle school, then I'm torn because I don't understand. We need the help for the student, the kids in the system, but we also need the help for the teachers. There is not another way to, other than a, an FTE dedicated to this. Is there any other mechanism you could use to track the certification? Maybe contract or something, you know?
I answer that from the standpoint of being a consumer, of being a conditional teacher. And I'll leave, Dr. Baldwin is the expert, because this is her division. But I know that when I came in as a conditional teacher, that the coursework that you have to take, there's one person who was managing the coursework. And at the time that I came in, maybe we had, I'm going to say, about 200 conditional teachers. So we were going in individually and going into HR, making sure that we have the right course. They have to approve the course that we're taking. So it's not that I can just go to the school and say, hey, I'm going to bully and taking this course. They need to ensure that that course is a valid course so that I'm going towards my certification. So I can't just go to any school, take a course, come back. The course that I need may be different from the course that you need, may be different from the course that Ms. Howell needs. And this is one person. So we need to have additional staffing. We need quality teachers and quality support for students. You're right, you're torn, but we got to do what we need to do in order to support.
I understand that.
Baldwin, so I'm going to put this in your court so that you can answer currently what's happening.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Baldwin, how many provisional teachers do we have approximately today?
Provisional teachers, we probably have about 1,400.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Board Member Ralph.
Yes, colleagues, I just want to bring your attention back to, I know there was a little bit of discussion with the versus, right? But I think when we look at supporting for our students, there may be areas of overlap. What I'm hearing Board Member Miller say is that we need to look to support our teachers. There's a lot of paperwork, there's, we're shifting, making sure that they fall in line. We have heard Dr. Baldwin loud and clear that they need additional support. And so I'm just asking for us to allow the full board to really take a look at it. I think this, we should support this. I yield.
Where are you? I was looking.
Sorry, I was asking.
Okay, that's fine. My question is, why would the board need to put in an amendment for this? Because this is definitely a need for the system. Why didn't the system recognize this and make a request? That's my question.
Human Resources did not put this in because we're also trying to be physically responsible of the resources that we currently have. And we are making do. But I would not say that making do is going to continue to move, move the system forward to what we need. You all have been very generous with helping our conditional educators. This is expanding that work to now our resident teachers. So, you know, just trying to be a good steward of physical, of our physical responsibilities. And if it's not approved, we will continue to make do. We will continue to figure out how to make it work. But I think that you all have recognized that our piecemealing it together to make it work is not in the best interest of the system, especially the times. especially the times that we're in when it comes to a critical period for educators.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Baldwin, because at least you recognize there was a need. What I'm not understanding is that you recognize it was a need, but you didn't put it in for whatever reason. I will support this, only because I recognize also how important it is to get staff in to help us solve some of these problems. We don't have enough support staff in a lot of areas in the system. This is yet just one. So I will support it, and I am just saying, I'm bewildered by why it was not more of a priority for the system. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you so much, and we're going to move to vote here now. One of the things I would just want to encourage you to do, Dr. Miller here, is, and Dr. Baldwin, is to think about, you know, if, if this is a, if really sounds to me like this is an administrative challenge in supporting educators, you know, let's think creatively. How could we pay seasoned educators, maybe in a monument, to support maybe their mentee teacher in guiding them through the, the process like a, like a coach or like a success coach? So that's something I'd like to see if we come back together at the full board to discuss this. And, uh, Dr. Miller, I want to see if you're open to that as well, and really thinking outside the box. Because if there are fourteen hundred people, just one person won't be able to handle the administrative load of this either. So thinking about, again, distributing this work.
Absolutely. I'm op, I'm open to having the discussion with Dr. Baldwin. I will reiterate, I would just say that, you know, in neighboring districts, particularly where I am, I have three coaches in additional to two additional individuals who do, who work with conditionals teachers. And it is, and, uh, Herculean task. But we don't want to lose teachers from Prince George's County to go to other districts.
Yes, thank you so much. So it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment FTE for Resident Teacher Program Expansion to be advanced for consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? But, uh, was that an I for in favor?
In favor, I'm sorry, my computer's lagging.
That's fine, okay. So I didn't hear any, any opposed or the motion passes. Thank you. We'll go to number six. So that is Ms. Mickens-Murray, co-sponsor Dr. Harris. Please present your amendment. You'll have one minute.
Is this the one for the registers?
His register, so yeah, I co-sponsored this one, but you can present.
Okay, the reason I wanted to, the system to have the registers work. First of all, do they work less than twelve months? Registers? Anybody? Personnel, Ms. Christie?
So moment, so a point of clarification, Chair Mickens-Murray, this is the part where you present, and then when we get into discussion, you'll ask.
Okay, well, I made an assumption, so if I've made an assumption, you guys can clarify that. What I'm finding is that parents have a difficult time registering their children throughout this system all year. And I'm thinking that in order to help with our customer service and let parents understand how important it is, how important we value getting their students in schools and in the right schools, I believe that the personnel needs to be available twelve months a year. So that's my pitch for the registers. They should be working twelve months. You want to add anything, Mr. Dr. Harris?
No, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. So may I have a motion to, sorry, let me just... May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Coordinators for Office of Family and School Partnership to be advanced for consider... I'm sorry, this is the right title, right? What is the correct title?
This one is for registers. We have two. This one is for registers. Okay, I see.
What is the title of the amendment?
What is it, Anis?
It's Coordinators for Office of Family and School Partnership.
Okay, then that's a different, I need to address that.
So, sorry, a point of clarification. Number five is registrar, registrar request. That's the title of the amendment.
Okay, so, um, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment? I'm sorry, coordinators for, I'm sorry.
The registered.
For the registers, number five is for.
Yes, what is the title? What is the exact title?
That's, that's the title.
Repeat it for me, please.
To increase, to reg, to increase the work year for registers. That's the only title that I saw.
Okay, okay, so may I have a motion to recommend the amendment to increase the work year for registrars?
Yes.
To be advanced. Okay, so moved. Can I have a second?
Second, Jocelyn Row.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Chair Mickens-Murray.
Okay. How many months do they work? Can somebody clarify that for me?
Hi, uh, this is Christie Murphy Baldwin. Currently, we have registrar positions. They are allocated to the high school, and they are currently twelve-month positions. I believe the conversation that we will have can also go into the board amendment that Board Member Row brought forward. What we're finding is the issue is typically at the elementary level where they don't have eleven and twelve-month positions. And that also kind of impacts middle school as well. So part of what we put in for the FY twenty-five budget is to allocate, because if you remember, every school does their own student-based budgeting. So principals have to make a decision on what they need. We have put forward for the FY twenty-five that every school will be allocated a secretary one position, and it will be an eleven-month position, and every school will have a secretary two. That way, schools can have the freedom to know that that level of staffing is an automatic, and should, based upon their needs of their school, they need additional secretarial support to help with registration. They then will now have the discretion to do that because we have made sure that every school will now have the positions needed to help register our families.
Okay, but if you don't have registers, will parents understand that the secretary has that role? Are they looking for someone to register their child, or are they looking for a secretary to register their?
Our se, our secretaries have the same ability to, to do the registration. So I think our families are looking for who can register my child. I don't think they're necessarily looking for the position title, but who has the ability to do that. And what we have found is in the summer, although we've allocated additional positions, you, we don't have the staff there to do it. So some schools, you might have one, we have one elementary school that might have three hundred students versus one elementary school that has over a thousand. So there are different levels of support that they need. But if we level out to make sure every school has what they need to register families, we believe that we're going to address the issue that you all have encountered from our families and constituents.
Okay, I can accept that. So you're saying that that is in the route?
Sorry, Chairman, your two minutes are up right now, and I just want to go to board mem.
Trying to figure out if I should withdraw it. That's what I'm.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that. Just, we're gonna, we're gonna do that condensed ease. Go ahead, Board Member Row.
Yes, um, so that's why I was gonna say this, if I need y'all's support on mine. Because seriously, there is a gap with the administration's response in tidying this all up. What is currently happening is we're making our schools pick and choose. And sometimes our elementary and our middle schools are losing out. And so I agree that they're doing that across the board, but there are other issues with secretarial staff. And so my request is that you take a look, or you listen to me. But I think Chair Mickens-Murray, what you're trying to accomplish will be, has already been covered by the administration in addition to what I'm trying to push and propose a little bit more.
Thank you. Um, Board, Chair Mickens-Murray, would you be willing to withdraw this amendment? Seeing as the administration has proposed a solution. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to move on now. We're going to move on to number six, Coordinators of Office of Family and School Partnership. Uh, Ms. Mickens-Murray, if you could, please present your amendment at this time.
Yes, I believe the parent and school partnership is under the Office of Communications, correct? Uh, well, anyway, what we saw, what I saw was that the Office of Communication asked for several new positions. And what I'm, what I'm requesting is that two of those positions be coordinators for the Office of School Partnerships. Because the, uh, Ms. Jackson came before us. I think she made a compelling case that we need additional assistance with the school system in order to identify the partners that we need to help us move the system forward.
Thank you.
Want to add something, and Mr. Harris?
Uh, can I ask something, Chair Mickens-Murray?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, just like Chair Mickens-Murray said, um, we are looking to reallocate funds that have already been baseline within the budget, uh, within the communications budget. So, um, based on the level that's higher, there might be a budget impact. But if those funds are already allocated, we're just looking to, to redistribute them as a different position.
Right.
Thank you. Alright, may I please have a motion to consider? Excuse me, um, sorry. May I have a motion to consider the amendment, uh, Coordinators for Office of Family and School Partnership be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend, uh, the amendment Coordinators for Office and Family of Office, Coordinators for Office of Family and School Partnership be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Alright, thank you. It has been moved, I'm sorry, the motion passes. Uh, we'll move now to Mental Health Awareness Expansion. Ms. Row. You have several co-sponsors here. We'll turn it over to you to go ahead and present your amendment. You have one minute. Thank you. Alright now, Ms. Row, we're trying, we're trying to get out of here now. You're on mute too. Okay, give her two seconds back. You're on mute.
Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. Hi. Um, I am coming before you today to expand, uh, the current mental health awareness program. These are some of the data points with regard to the crisis that we are in. We are in a mental health crisis. This budget amendment supports the district's strategic outcome goal four, which intends to increase awareness of mental health and wellness linkages to learning by eliminating stigma, increasing access to support, and decreasing the number of avoidable adverse educational outcomes. This proposal, um, as it was presented, it was a five-year plan. I would like for us to advance it uh, so that we can work collaboratively to see if we can look at a three-year plan, uh, which is what I support. Um, I emailed, um, you, board members, of this study, right? And this study, um, looks at, it, it revealed that in, in COVID, one in five adolescents aged twelve to seventeen report symptoms of anxiety. We really need to expand the mental health awareness training program because, um, it is called Sources of Strength, and what it will do is, um, change the norms and behaviors surrounding suicide within a school community and increase social support and connectedness among students, including suicidal students. And this program is currently in existent presently in the district.
Thank you so much. Uh, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment Mental Health Awareness Expansion to be advanced for consideration by the full board?
So moved.
Okay, is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Mental Health Awareness Expansion be advanced for consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues.
Next is number eight, Clerical Positions Enhancing School Secretary Staffing. Ms. Row, please present your amendment or ask questions. You have one minute.
Uh, yes, thank you. So I would like to, um, just talk with Dr. Baldwin on the, the, can you just walk us through? So we had a little previous conversation that the one and the two band is already being covered by the superintendent's proposed, budget, but can you talk more about the gap that I'm trying to close?
I think the gap that you're trying to close is what you referenced when you said that, um, and you have to apologize, my dog may start barking, is, is the fact that schools have had to pick and choose um, which positions they had to buy. Um, and what we are trying to move away from is that they don't have to pick and choose anymore. So if we give them that base setting of a sec one and a sec two, then they can make, as a principal, they have the discretionary authority to make a decision on what they need. Because a school, for example, a Baden Elementary School that may only have three hundred students may not need a accounting secretary, because they're not, they may not have as many fund, uh, money to monitor as much as a Mary Harris Mother Jones, which might has almost a thousand children. So we really don't want to take the discretionary authority away from principals and what they need, but we also want to give them, put them in a place where they don't have to make choices.
But thank you so much, Dr. Baldwin. But what I'm hearing from, uh, members of, um, the union when I have spoken with them is that it creates dissension amongst staff if they are one, two, or three. So colleagues, I would love for us to advance this to the full board so that we could collectively, uh, figure out how we can close the gap um, and to really increase, um, uh, you know, just aligning ourselves to really giving the schools what they need. Um, and this does close the gap on the registrar, uh, conversation, and I would love for us to continue the conversation as a full board.
Okay, so you're keeping your amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay, alright, so I'd like to move forward here then. Okay, um, may I have a motion to, I'm sorry. It has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Clerical Positions be advanced for consideration to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Alright, the motion passes.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mrs. Adams Stafford. I did not hear the first and second for that. I heard her discussion.
Oh, we didn't mo, we didn't move it? I thought, I thought I did.
I'm sorry. I think we went straight, her, her comments, her, um, presentation went into a discussion. Sorry about that. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Clerical Positions be advanced for consideration to the full board?
I move that clerical, uh, amendment eight be moved forward to the full board.
Okay, second? Is there any further discussion? Okay, it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Clerical Positions be advanced for consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, and the motion passes.
Thanks again, colleagues.
Okay, we'll move on to number nine, Safe Passage Coordinators. Dr. Harris, please present your amendment. I, your time will be one minute.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time today, colleagues, and I have a lot of folks that have actually helped me with this. Um, want to note them by name, Jocelyn Row, Chair Mickens-Murray, Shay Adam Stafford, Pamela Boozer Strutter, and coworker Lolita Walker. So thank you for your time and effort on this. I'm in light of the ongoing crossing guard shortages in Prince George's County, uh, recent pedestrian-related fatalities and the pressing need for immediate action to safeguard our students, the following budget amendment seeks to designate two safe passage coordinators tasked with ensuring student safety and efficient traffic control near the school buildings in Prince George's County. The increasing, the increasingly complex urban landscapes and traffic dynamics pose inherent risk to students during their commute to and from our educational institutions. The safe passage coordinators would play a pivotal role in orchestrating and overseeing safety protocols, streamlining traffic patterns at the beginning and ending of the school day, and implementing measures to safeguard students who navigate these surroundings. By assuming responsibilities for the coordination of safe passes routes for our schools in Prince George's County, this role aims to mitigate potential hazards and foster safe and secure environment for our students.
Thank you so much. Alright. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Safe Passage Coordinators? May I have a motion to recommend the amendment safe passage coordinators be advanced for consideration for, to the full board for approval?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, Board Member Route?
Yes, as a co-sponsor, I just want to speak in favor. Uh, we all know the different tra, tragedies that we experienced this school year. And we really need to take a look at looking at safe passage. Um, we don't want to have any more deaths. From our students to our staff. So we need to really look at this and these positions will create an opportunity. Uh, for someone to really be looking at, uh, safe passage. So I hope you will, uh, speak in fa, uh, you will vote in favor of this motion tonight. This budget amendment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, it has been moved and second, I'm sorry. Yes, Anise?
Can we pause for about ten seconds before we make the motion? It's not coming through on my end. I can't hear, I didn't hear the first and second. So when you turn your mics on, just pause for a second and then speak, if you wouldn't mind. So Ms. Route, you made the motion? And then who seconded?
I did.
Student board.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so it has been moved and seconded to. Recommend the amendment safe passage coordinators be advanced, uh, for approval by the fu, full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Before we go on to the next, um, amendment, I just wanted to backtrack. Um, so Dr. Miller's first amendment, which was for bullying prevention. Um, the vote count was three. Um, uh, Dr. Harris voted in the affirmative. So that did pass forward to the full board, just wanted to, uh, make that correction for everyone's awareness.
Thank you.
Moving on to number ten, um, environment. Yes, thank you. Um, environment quality technician. Dr. Harris, please present your amendment and, and or ask questions. You have one minute.
Yes, ma'am, thank you again. Um, so colleagues, uh, this, um, pretty big motion for me or pretty big amendment for me. So approximately one in five individuals in the U.S. dedicate a substantial portion of their daily lives within school premises. This can be students, educators, facility managers, and others. And the quality of air within these education facilities is integral to the establishment of, um, healthy learning environments, right? And so the collective efforts of educators, administrators, and other school personnel are pivotal to ensuring the well-being, comfort, and readiness of students for optimal learning experiences. This budget amendment seeks to change the role within the, within the current proposed budget of our water purification supervisor. Uh, in the budget to an environmental quality supervisor. This shifts the roles and the responsibilities to not only encompass. Um, water quality, but also indoor air quality as a proactive and a holistic, uh, approach to ensuring overall health. Um, the budgetary impacts could be negligible as you just expand the roles and responsibility of a role on FTE that you are, had, you had already facilitated. Um, the alternative strategy to that is to add one FTE for that specific position. And I plan to work with the COO at his office to ensure what the best route is moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment, um, environment quality technician? Be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval?
They're moved.
Second, Jocelyn Route.
All right, is there any discussion? Uh, Board Member Rivera Forbes?
Um, this actually wasn't discussion. I had my hand raised before. I was just asking if you could leave a bit more time before you call the non-in-favor. Because sometimes I try to unmute to say aye and I'm not able to in enough time, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, i- if there is a specific one that you wanted to say for the record, do you have that, um, we can do that after this amendment?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't see any hands for discussion, so we're going to go into, um, voting for this. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment. Environment quality technician be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval at the February. Um, at the upcoming board meeting. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, um, the motion passes. Hey, uh, Board Member Rivera Forbes, do you have the number of the amendment you wanted to go back to for the record?
I do not remember the number, but it was the amendment Dr., Board Member Miller proposed for bullying.
Okay, so that changes the vote count then. Okay, so I, I thought that I was correct the first time that it had two. Um, so. If you all would just allow Anise and I some, some time at the end of this meeting to, uh, correct the record. Um, thank you, Rain, for bringing that up and thank you, uh, Anise for, um. Attempting to flag this as well. I think there was just some confusion around that vote count. So we'll come back to that at the end. We'll come back to that at the end, thank you. That will change the outcome for that one. Okay. All right. Okay, the next one is mine and it seems as though two of my amendments have been combined into one. These are actually two separate amendments. Um, so. I'm gonna just begin with the first one to have a board communications director. Um, I think right now as a board, it's incumbent upon us to have a communication vehicle. Where we can talk about some of the work that board members are doing individually to speak with a collective voice. Um, to also share some of the work we're doing in our respective communities and some of the initiatives we're doing as a, as a board. Um, but as it stands right now, um, while we, we are individually sharing content. And, and putting out information about our respective districts, um, we are having to work with the school system. Um, and they already have an entire communications arm and vehicle that they are using to put out important information for students and families. And so I think that the Board of Education, uh, needs to have its own, uh, communications director. And so I'm gonna make this eleven and twelve. So, um, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment Board of Education Communications Director be advanced for. Um, consideration and I, and I want to be clear. That it says communications director, but it's a communication position. So this could be a contractor, it could be a digital marketing firm, a consulting firm. It doesn't have to be in a director level position.
And Madam Chair, may, or may I share one quick comment?
Um, yeah, she may, just, um, one second, let me, um. I'm sorry, did I have a, um, motion to approve this?
Don't move, Jocelyn Route.
A second duty, okay.
Is there any discussion? And then, uh, Chief Boyd?
Great, uh, I just wanted, I did include this, um, in the response. Um, wanted to just make sure everyone has a chance to look at that. Uh, we actually did receive a copy editor in the board office. I know the desire, um, and the, the wish of the board is to make sure that there's a communications arm for the board. Uh, but I also listed some suggestions in there, um, as well, um, including the firm piece. I just wanted to make sure everybody has a chance to look at that before it goes to the full board.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, Board Member Route?
Yes, uh, so thank you, uh, Chair, for calling on me. I, I speak in favor of this, uh, as a new board member. Um, who I, I feel that we need staff. The board office is bare bones. And we need staff that give us the capacity, um, to provide oversight, which is our responsibility. So sending out information that's separate from, uh, the district. That, that's something that we need to be able to do and not everyone has that talent to be able to work computers and, you know, things. So I speak in favor, um, of adding all staff to the board office as it comes throughout tonight. Thank you.
Uh, uh, Chair Mickens Murray?
Thank you. I also speak in favor of, uh, adding this position to the board staff. The board needs skill sets that are just not in that board office today. And the board is recognizing that. And in our oversight role. We are trying to identify the level of staff that we need and the skill sets that we need. And this is one way that we can do this, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief Boyd.
Sure, um, I, I, I just want to, uh, make a request on behalf of, um, my team and the administration. That my hope, um, would be that we have an opportunity to at least, um, collaborate if this position is, um, uh, passed. It's important that the communication, both of the administration and the board is, is streamlined, um. Uh, for the, the larger Prince George's County community.
Yes, I think this would be something we would craft co, collectively together and thank you for your suggestions. Um, we're very open to this being in an RFP, not a full position. Uh, as you mentioned here, working with, um, local universities, leveraging other local talent. You know, just, we just need more personnel with this expertise that can support in getting this information out. So, you know, I'm looking at the fiscal impact being not a full hundred thou, two hundred thousand dollar position. But, um, much less, um, to really just help us with bare bones communication.
Thanks.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. Um. To recommend the amendment Board of Education. Uh, communications, uh, be advanced to the full board. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, the motion passes. So I'm gonna shift number twelve to, twelve to be a Board of Education Budget Analyst position. Um, so. Really, the goal here is for the Board of Education to have its own budget analyst. Uh, that can support us with having insight into longitudinal shifts within the budget. The, the capital improvement budget and the operating budget. Um, and providing us with, um, and really supporting us in our duties of fiscal oversight. Um, I'll just give an example, you know, if, if board members ask for like. A ten-year spread of a specific line item and how that has changed over time and, and just wanting. That deeper level of analysis. Um, I, I think that board members should have access to a person who's dedicated. To supporting the board with systemic oversight, um, of the budgets. Um, and that's, that's all that I have for that one. So, um, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment Board of Education Budget Analysis Position? And, and I, and I'm sorry, in my board, um, amendment. I asked if we can do this in collaboration with a local university, which can reduce costs. So there are public policy universities all over and this could be a part of their graduate study, it could be graduate student. Um, so it doesn't have to be a, a full position, um, but we need some level, the board needs a budget analysis arm. So I'm gonna go back. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment, um, Board of Education Budget Analysis Position? Be advanced for a consideration to the full board?
They're moved.
Second, Jocelyn Route.
Is there any discussion? Um, I'll go to Chief Boyd.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to make mention that, um. We have a, a budget analyst specifically that supports the board, um, the board. And I just want to encourage the, the entire board, um, to consider how we might leverage that position for reporting purposes. We are, um, very open to partnerships with universities. Uh, we've already, uh, started to have conversations with universities for other. Uh, components of the work that we do, um, across our district. But, uh, I urge us to look at, uh, what we already have. I listed that in my response, uh, to the amendment. Um, and there might be an opportunity for us to just increase, uh, reporting. Um, and, and make sure there's two-way communication so that you all have the information you need so that you can, um, govern.
Thank you, um, for, um, Chair Mickens Murray.
I believe that they request for this, a, and I'm looking at it more as a, a financial budget analyst. At a higher level and I'm also looking at it and, and I thank you, uh, Chair Adam Stafford for thinking of this. Because in the oversight role, we need someone who is not reporting to the administration. To oversee, to, to analyze a budget or budgetary information for us. So that would be an independent person. That person can be from a university, it could be a contractor, it could be whatever, and we could work together, um. Uh, chief, uh, board to identify where that person should come from. But in our oversight role, we need someone that is not reporting to the administration. Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Route?
Uh, thank you so much. As I spoke previously, I speak in favor of this motion. Because as a new board member have served on other, um, boards, commissions, uh, councils. We, 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 we need the staff to support our capacity, um, to have adequate oversight responsibility. What brought my, what, what really, um, looked at my attention with this, um, amendment brought forth by you, Chair. It was really looking at, looking at the longitudinal ways of being able to predict, right? I think that our budget analysts and our staff that's presently working, um, for the district. Does a great job of really keeping us abreast and aware of, um, you know. You know, things that are currently going on, but I think to make fiscal sound decisions, um, with a lot of money. We are in a different situation right now and I'm confident that if we would have had somebody maybe last year to say. Hey, we may want to look at these taxes may be affected. This may go up, this may go down. Looking at, um, like a wide range, um, so I appreciate the district and the budget analysts that we already have that's supporting us. Um, but I think that this board needs a little bit more and I'm very open to, I'm really looking at building our workforce, right? In administration and so partnering with a university would be, uh, in the district's best interest.
Thank you so much and I, I just want to say I really do think we can get this for little to no cost. From our local universities to support us. It's, it's really about building capacity for board members to be able to engage in these budget conversations. Um, so definitely we're hoping to work with the administration on this and identifying creative ways to, to support the board. Um, in our understanding of budget analysis. So this is the second round for Chief Boyd and for, uh, Chair Mickens Murray.
It's okay, I actually don't need it. It was just an invitation again to collaborate, but you mentioned that all over my hand. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to say for the record that I'm not saying that our budget analyst is currently tracking the funds as we spend them for us. But when you're looking at budgets, you are projecting out and we need to, uh, have that capacity as well. So I just wanted to put that on the record that we appreciate all the service that we're getting from our budget analysts today and we want to keep him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. To recommend the amendment, um, Board of Education Budget Analysis Position. Uh, be advanced for consideration to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all opposed? Any abstentions?
For the record, I was, I, I just couldn't go unmute.
Okay, thank you, those four ayes. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you, um. So my next amendment, uh, is about the board having a lobbyist. Um, I'll have just one minute here to, um, to speak. So, uh, the Board of Education has traditionally, um, entered into its own lobbying contract. Um, if you go on board docs and look up board lobbyist, you'll see, you know, from twenty ten. All the way, uh, I think like probably the twenty thirteen, uh, the board had its, its own lobbyist. Um, and I think that this is important because, uh, the board needs a distinct lobbyist from the school system's lobbyists for several reasons. Um, oftentimes, you know, in the course of, you know, just being an institution, uh, that we can have divergent interests. Um, it also, uh, supports with accountability, um, with checks and balances. Often, we, the. Often, we, the board may have a position that the community members represent that perhaps the school system doesn't represent. And, you know, honestly, this is really just a structural thing that helps us improve our governance. I don't think that we're saying that the current school system lobbyist is doing anything wrong. It's just to provide the Board of Education with an arm to lobby for issues that matter to the board, which may not be on the radar of the school system. And this will help us to coordinate efforts and to really speak more effectively in Annapolis during the legislative session. All right. So, um, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment Board Lobbyist be advanced for consideration to the full board?
So move, Jocelyn Row.
Second?
Second, oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion, board member Ralph?
Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford, for bringing forth this motion. As we're experiencing a a in our legislative season where we have a highly sought-of legislative item that's being looked at. I did ask the question to many of you as a new member on the board, do we have a lobbyist? Like, who is tracking this? Because, you know, we are not full-time employee, we're not full-time. We are part-time, and a lot of people don't realize that. But to be able to take off and go to Annapolis and track different things. You know, i- it may be supportive to the board in in our current role that gives us provide oversight. In addition, what happens if there is a conflict between the board and the administration on a certain bill that presents itself? I I don't know how that, I I'm just, you know, in our current practice, we understand that the district has a fine lobbyist, work with that lobbyist outside of, you know, my role here on this board. But I also think, you know, that I want to ask the what-if question. This person that can be contracted would allow us to have a person that is supporting what the board wants. Because there will be conflict between the district and the board. And so I I'm just speaking in favor of this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member McIn- Chair McInnes Murray, and then Chief Boyd.
Thank you. I I see this as an opportunity with lessons learned from this legislative session. If we had a lobby lobbyist, we would have someone who would give us advice on how to approach certain situations. And that probably would have been helpful this year as we entered into the legislative season. We also would have had someone to help us craft how to really put together priorities and all of those things that we were championing with our legislators. And they would also help us to understand how to build those relationships rather than just meeting people, greeting, shaking hands, and I'm Judy McInnes Murray, and how are you? So I I see this as an opportunity. I don't see it as adversarial. I see it also as an opportunity for someone to help us understand how to better collaborate with the administration with our legislative priorities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chief Boyd.
Thank you. I I just want to, again, for the record, put out an invitation to collaborate when and if this comes to fruition. I think we are are stronger together, so I think there there will be opportunities for your lobbyist team and the lobbyists that we are currently working with now to work together to move forward in the next legislative sessions to come.
Yep, and just just to add to that, one of the things that I think is extremely important is that there is a diversified menu of lobbyists. In my last district, we had four different companies that we worked with, four different lobbyists. And we did that simply because what you see, whether it be an entity that supports you like the county, or sometimes that entity will support both of you. And there can be a a conflict of interest. And it's very difficult for the organizations involved, very difficult for the the lobbyists as well. So we made sure to have a diversified menu of lobbyists. It was different coming here, and we we have a very talented, you know, group of lobbyists that we work with with one company. But it's something that I'm even considering, you know, moving forward with the future to make sure that we have at least another company on deck as well that can support the district, the board, whatever that that need exists at the time. So just wanted to to share kind of my thoughts and what I've seen over the course of time as well. Because right now, we're not very diversified. And while we want to continue working with the organization that we're working with, we'd like to diversify that as well.
Thank you so much, Superintendent House and Chief Boyd, for your comment. So it has been moved and seconded to advance the to recommend the amendment Board Lobbyists be advanced for consideration at future board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Okay, the last one, number thirteen here, Budget Operating Review Committee. So this is actually, I believe that this will be like a very nominal cost. I'm not thinking even probably more than a thousand dollars. But essentially, what I'm asking for is that the school system develop an operating budget review committee. So in our neighboring counties, in Howard County and in Montgomery County, there are citizen-led operating budget review committees. The reality is, the budget board members that serve on the OBFA committee, as my colleague has said, we work full-time jobs, and a lot of us, finance is not our background. And so having community members that do have budget and fiscal analysis expertise, they can support us and the budget analyst or the organization that we work with. And really having a depth of understanding of what is, what the budget means from year to year. They can also support us in getting the message out about, you know, what changes are happening in the budget. Because again, we are a small committee, and it's hard for us to reach the vast number of families and community members that need to understand the budget. They would report to the board and do their own analysis of the operating budget and then present recommendations to the OBFA committee or to the Board of Edu- Education. All right, so I have, I'm sorry, excuse me. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Operating Budget Review Committee to be advanced for consideration to the full board for approval?
So.
Oh, second, Jocelyn Row.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I think Superintendent House, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, yeah. I was just going to mention that there might be some consideration. I've I've seen this done in a couple of different ways where similar committees like OBFA has has actually invited a, whether it be a CPA or someone that has the expertise from the community that might be a parent on to a committee like OBFA. So I just throw that out there. We, in my last district, that's actually what we we did, and it was great. Great insight to have someone that I think they were from a Fortune 500 company, they were a parent, and they offered great insight on a on a monthly basis during during those committee meetings. So I just throw that out there as as a as a possibility if OBFA was open to the 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 possibility.
Absolutely. Thank you for that suggestion, and I certainly am. Uh, thank you, Chief Boyd.
Uh, I guess it's really an echo, something very similar. I just, I mentioned that in the amendment response. And of course, Superintendent has advisory committees that he's pulled together, one of which that he'll be meeting with every month, which which was existing is the PCCAC. And I, the parents on that committee are also professionals and experts and have their level of expertise that they can share with this board. So I just wanted to mention that, and it is in the amendment response. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Just for clarification, you said the budget implication was like a thousand dollars or something like that?
Yes, I'm thinking if this group meets, you know, once a month, maybe like providing food and space. Possibly, and it would be, you know, member, folks from every district. I mean, we need some staff personnel to work overtime, but I'm not thinking it being much. Thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was I was just thinking in terms of, I love the idea. I'm just thinking in terms of like, why is it a budget amendment, you know? But I love the idea. I think if there's ties to funds, I understand why it's coming from operating now, but that's my clarifying question. Thank you.
And I think it should come from the board's budget. So I I'm willing to flesh this out by the time it reaches the full board to have a better specificity in terms of where the funding should come from and how much. But, you know, I'd love to hear feedback on how much, let's say, like the climate action work plan, work.
Yeah.
Group, how much money did they spend like over the course of a year, meaning that group? That that'd be helpful information for me to know.
Yeah. Again, just for clarification, I I like the, I'd like, I love the idea. I'm just was cons- not concerned, I was just inquiring about the process of how we get there.
Okay, yes, I'm envisioning it being similar to PCCAC where we would cast a net with all of our districts, asking people to apply, and then the board members voting.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Operating Budget Review Committee to be advanced for consideration for the full board approval. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, the motion.
Ms. Row, I'm gonna go. I say aye. See, that's why I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. So we're we're going to move now to number fourteen, Student Chromebook Repair Program. Dr. Harris, you'll have one minute to complete your presentation.
Very good. Thank you for the floor. I'm excited to present this amendment. It really builds on the amendment that Board Chair Judy McInnes Murray put last year. I helped to co-sponsor on that one. The the expansion of the Chromebook Repair Program. For those that don't know, the implementation of this over the past summer helped us to repair over eighteen hundred Chromebooks, specifically from our students, which is an amazing task. We're looking to, this budget amendment seeks to expand our capacity out to two additional schools. For those that don't know, we we cover ten schools currently. We have started the, well, not we, but Dr. Zuckman and his team have started the hiring process this year and has generated over one hundred applications. Students gain experiences in terms of applying for jobs, requesting letters of recommendation, building out their resumes and CVs, and ultimately interviewing, because they interview for these positions as well. And so I think this is an integral part of what we do to help raise and 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 make that pipeline of our students directly into STEAM or STEM or whatever they want to do. And even if it's just a aside skill that they have, because everyone has computers nowadays. So, thank you. That's that's my time. I hope to get your support on this budget amendment.
Thank you so much, and and congratulations, Chair McInnes Murray, on that successful program. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Student Chromebook Repair Program be advanced for consideration to the full board?
Make a motion to recommend the student Chromebook go to the full board repair program.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, it has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Student Chromebook Repair Program be advanced for consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. All right, we're moving on to continuation of special education outreach and engagement for TAY. Ms. Row, you'll have one minute to present your amendment. You may begin. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, Chair. So the ARC, the ARC is a program here that supports individuals that are dis- disabled. And they have a pretty intensive adult program. And they have secured funding and services for transition age youth in particular. So this proposal is to allocate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improve and expand the outreach and support to students in special education to better assist them in planning for adult life after school. So what the administration has stated to us in their response is that this is already being done, right? But if the, if 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 our transition age youth don't get this support with filling out all these applications, if they're physically disabled or unable to live by themselves, it further impacts their life and their well-being. And so this pilot program has shown success already a couple year, a couple, two, two fiscal year ago. And there was success that was presented to us. So my request is just to send it to the full board so that we can look at it. Oh, and my co-sponsor is Pamela Boozer Struthard for this one.
Okay, thank you. All right. So may I have a motion to recommend the amendment continuation of special education outreach and engagement for TAY be advanced for consideration to the full board?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment continuation of special education outreach and engagement for TAY to be advanced to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't hear Mrs. McInnes Murray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion passes. Thank you. We're moving now to in-person professional learning space. Is Mr. Briggs here for this amendment?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Awesome. So you have a minute to present your amendment, and thank you so much.
Oh, a minute, okay. Well, I just want to start by saying thank you for making me aware of this opportunity to speak on the amendment. Also want to just frame that for each of the amendments I'm going to present, they're about addressing the teacher shortage and teacher recruitment. As we all know, we have a national crisis, we have a local crisis. And as I've been around a different schools in district too, I've talked to principals, I've talked to parents, and that's continued to come up, is that we just don't have enough staff to cover their positions, especially those essential positions like special education. So this is the in-person professional learning space. The last thing I'll say really quickly is that I see teacher recruitment and development is both proactive measures as well as reactive measures. So we've got to keep teachers in the profession, and then we've also got a, I'm really have pathways for teachers to come into the, into the profession. So with that in mind, I request your immediate attention to providing a consistent space for in-person professional learning to support our teachers in their development and provide the type of robust growth opportunities that keep teachers in the profession. This small investment will help ensure our teachers receive high-quality professional development opportunities in consistent spaces to improve our district's competitive performance and overall teacher retention. And this would likely, wouldn't have to be an increase. It could be just earmarking funds for contracted services, but happy to answer questions or share more.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment In-Person Professional Learning Space be advanced for consideration?
So move, Jocelyn Row.
Second, I'm McInnes Murray.
Are there any, is there any discussion?
I, yeah, I have questions.
Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Yes, I have a question. Do we already have space for this professional development or? Board Member Briggs, are you asking for additional space?
So this would be for, after talking to Dr. Baldwin, this would be for a consistent space for professional learning. Right now, they're like, yeah, they're just kind of different places, churches or other places. But if they could have one consistent place, then they could really provide the robust wraparound supports for teachers to get the the type of professional development they deserve.
That's helpful. Thanks.
All right, board member Ralph, and then Mr. Washington.
Thank you so much, Chair. I speak in favor of this, especially with the prior amendment that I put forth, the mental health awareness training expansion. There does need, we we do need dedicated space, and that way we could get the best bang for our buck when we invest in. When we invest in our train the trainer models that we have already invested in, we need to be able to balance to allow, um, you know, uh, of. Space for the trainings to take place in person. Um, COVID is over and so I, I, I think that this is, um. This is, uh, phenomenal. Um, thank you for bringing it forward, Briggs and, but then all Board Member Briggs. But I also, I see, um, Mr. Washington's hand is raised, uh, but I also think there may, may be room and I don't know, I hope there's room. To talk with our developer about this need as well as we are thinking about our, our schools. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Uh, yes, and, and, uh, Board Member Briggs, thank you so much for the, uh, for, for the amendment. We are just to, to frame this out for everyone. We are look, starting to look at, uh, the full assets of the school system as it relates to office space and spaces that we currently have with staff. And so we are actually starting to undergo that review process with, uh, uh, an advisor, uh, uh, directed by, uh, the superintendent. For us to look at the best utilization of our buildings and that is something that we plan to incorporate in that review and we talked to them. Uh, as they get started to put their proposal together to, uh, that that will be part of what they are looking at as well. Uh, we do agree, uh, that, uh, looking for consistent, uh, adequate training, uh, space, uh, is necessary. And we do believe that it's possible. We just are, uh, requesting that, uh, you give us some time as we start to move through. Uh, the, the asset management and looking at the consolidation of potential offices, uh, to make sure that we are, uh. Finding the optimal space for it, but that is something that, uh, has been incorporated in our guidance. Uh, as we start the review of, uh, the consolidation or asset management review of, uh, school properties. Uh, as, as, uh, directed by, uh, Superintendent House.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, it's been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment In-Person Professional Learning Space be advanced for consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I think my daughter has something to say about this, but, uh, this motion passes. Uh, we're gonna move forward, uh, with the Teacher Academy of Maryland. Mr. Briggs. Um, you have one minute. Thank you.
And I have a second, um, cause I'm having some computer issues. Second.
Chair Adam Stafford, I, I voted aye for the last vote as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, remember Briggs, um, if you need a minute, I can, um, have, uh, you ready now? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So, um, this again just continues along the path of, uh, addressing the teacher shortage. So I'm requesting your immediate attention to the Teacher Academy of Maryland. To give funding for individuals in teacher preparation and college readiness, supporting youth with financial support. As our district, like our nation, continues to face a teacher shortage, we must invest in programs that identify opportunities for youth to find pathways in education. Bringing one full-time equivalent to support youth and fun, uh, finding financial support will be a step in the right direction. The Teacher Academy of Maryland is a program to study, uh, a study that provides opportunities for students to earn industry certifications and their licenses. With the added value of articulated college credits. Students participating in these programs actively engage in real-world experiences through internships and mentoring, uh, opportunities. These experiences allow students to apply classroom instruction meaningfully, giving them a head start in viable careers. And just want to add that this is, you know, when we talk about grow our own, we are plucking our kids. You know, um, from, from the classroom space and they're leaving with credentials where they would be able to go into kind of industry-recognized fields. Perhaps a paraprofessional in a school and start to address some, uh, issues that we have with.
Thank you so much. Uh, may I have a motion to recommend the amendment Teacher Academy of Maryland be advanced for consideration to the full board?
So moved, Jocelyn Row.
Second, um, Mickens Murray.
Is there any discussion? Okay, uh, go ahead, uh, Ms. Rivera Forbes and Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you, Chair. So my question is, for the Teacher Academy of Maryland, are we referring to the high school program?
Yes, I believe that's the, the program.
And utilizing that program as a pipeline to?
Mm-hmm. So this would be less of utilizing, the, the program's already in existence and, uh, it provides the resources to, to students, um, as it exists right now. But this would be for a staff position that would continue to work to support, uh, the, 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 the needed services for students. So this isn't necessarily addressing anything with the program, but just ensuring that we have additional staff to can, uh, provide robust supports to students.
Okay, so more teachers to teach the program, essentially.
This would be, uh, I believe for like a specialist role, so it wouldn't necessarily be that either. It wouldn't be someone in front of kids. It's more of behind the scenes when you think about the coordinating, the, the research or the programs or the partnerships, all of those things that need to happen to really make the program robust. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my, my question is, do we already have this, um, position within our system?
Dr. Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, so currently we do, the Teacher Academy of Maryland is housed in the career and technical side of academics. We currently have someone who actually coordinates the program, bringing the students in. Um, this proposal, um, is to work to support the students once they leave that program. Right now, we have students who will enter the program, but then they're not entering the profession. And so one of the things we're also finding is that individuals won't aspire to be teachers, but they don't have the money to go to college. They don't have the resources for that next level to pursue what they're gaining from Prince George County Public Schools. So we'd like to expand that effort and create in some ways another grow your own program, but growing our own students. So that we can help them get into college, we can help them get the money that they need. And then ultimately, if there's possibility to bring forward some budget items to fund them going to college, which would be wonderful. Because a lot of our students in the TAM program are from very diverse backgrounds. We could then ultimately require them to come back and, and serve in the school district for at least two to three years. So it's an increase in our grow your own program. So we had the beginning part, this proposal is to finish it out.
Thank you. That brings clarity. I appreciate that. Thanks so much.
And if I can just add one last part, I think for board members, as we think about college to career. Um, it's, it's also like beyond that point when we think about economic mobility, ensuring that students have, um, particularly for those that are most vulnerable. Like they can enter the industry with a livable wage. They can make, you know, a good salary at, in their early twenties. Um, and it's really a pathway for them. So I think this is.
That's good.
Okay, Board Member Route?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I, I'm be just totally transparent. I was not in favor of, uh, when I read the documents. But I am now in favor in hearing, um, the presentation by Board Member Briggs, um, and Dr. Baldwin. So I, 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 I would like for us to support this, growing our own with our students. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, so, um. It has been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Teacher Academy of Maryland be advanced for consideration to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, and the motion passes. Um, we're gonna go to number twenty. Dr. Supora Miller, please present your amendment or ask questions. You have one minute. This is for sensory rooms in elementary schools.
I'm sorry, um, okay, so this is really to look at a place for, can you hear me?
Excuse me. If I may. We have to, um, discuss number nineteen. The teacher recruitment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's go backwards. Um, we're gonna go backwards to number nineteen. This is teacher recruitment, resident teacher. But I thought we just, we already discussed resident teacher expansion.
It's two different things.
It's still two different. Okay, sorry.
Dr. Baldwin can also provide a bit more clarity, really.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Board Member Adam Stafford, if I could just clarify that, um. Excuse me, the proposal that, uh, Board Members of Port, Dr. Miller brought forward is, um, the same thing as the proposal that, um, Board Member Briggs brought forward. So, um, I didn't know if we needed to have additional conversations since I think the original one was, uh, or Dr. Miller's was brought forward. For the larger board to discuss and I can address both at that time if it would, um. Provide clarity.
I'm sorry, just so I'm clear, they are the same amendment to expand the resident teacher program?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we need any further discussion. It passed.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Board Member Briggs, are you all right with that? The amendment passed?
Yes, perfect, yeah.
That, Dr. Miller's amendment passed. Okay, Dr. Miller, please go forward with your one minute on sensory rooms in elementary schools.
Okay, so this proposal is, uh, aimed at establishing calming rooms in all elementary and middle schools. Recognizing the heightened need for such social emotional support. Since students have returned from the pandemic, this would be a dedicate, dedicated space where students can effectively manage their emotions. Particularly anger and seamlessly reintegrate into the educate set. Um, the sensory rooms will provide students with autonomy to choose centers that best suits their needs and diffusing their anger. Um, in addition to this, um, I believe that staff's already trained and so this will have someone to specifically man the room the entire time. But when a student needs to diffuse anger, as qualified staff would need to go with them so that the student is not unattended. Um, I did read the response from the staff and I do, uh, see that there's some already in schools, which is great, so we won't need as many. And two, that we can also use, uh, funding from community schools, which I welcome. So if I need to make some changes to this amendment, I'm willing to do that, um, so that it can reflect the actual need that's already there.
Yes, I, um, I'm sorry, let me go, uh, in order here. So I wanted to thank you for that description. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment Sensory Rooms in Elementary Schools be advanced for consideration?
So moved.
My second.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion? And I'm, I'm just going to ask that, um, I'm going to ask that, uh. We come back with some more specific data on how many schools have them, how many schools you're asking for it to be. Added to in the cost. That's, that's all I'm asking. If we can have this by the next board meeting? Board Member?
Yeah, I'm in total.
We can do that. Okay. Okay.
Sorry, um, Board Member, oh, may I be recognized? Sorry.
Sure, yes, mm-hmm.
Yes, I'm in agreement with that. When I read the, um, information from the staff, I do agree that we need to ensure that we, um. Have the appropriate ask so that data would help in changing that, um, in.
Thank you so much. Um, Chair Mickens Murray?
I'm in agreement with you, um, uh, Chair Adam Stafford. We need a little bit more information. I realize that we have some of these. Uh, stations already in some schools and I realized that some schools improvised and they might not be a separate space, but a space within the classroom. And, and I know that Dr. Miller's thinking of something different, but I also wanted to share that yesterday. Uh, I had the pleasure of meeting with, um, Senator, um, Saunders Staff. At, uh, Goddard, our grade school, and he is very interested in helping, uh, with some funding for community schools. So I just think that all of this kind of works together if we can, um, help them to understand what we need. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Alrighty, so what we're going to do now is, um. Move forward with the vote here. Um, so it's been moved and seconded to recommend the amendment Sensory Rooms in Elementary Schools be advanced for consideration to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, the motion passes. Um, this is our last amendment here. So, uh, Board Member Harris, uh, this one was omitted. If you can go ahead and, um, give your one-minute presentation.
Yep, yep, yep. Sorry, one second. I have to put the baby down. Um, okay, so this amendment is number fifteen. Number fifteen, information, what's the title there? Information Technology Enhancements. For the record, uh, Chair Adam Stafford, I'll actually be, actually be withdrawing this amendment because I had a great conversation with Dr. Zuckman right before. The meeting, before the clarification of the committee. The amendment seeks to provide some supplementary resources when it comes to the division of information and technology. Um, while we are identifying ways to bolster Prince George County in that space. This budget amendment seeks to, or sought to earmark additional funds so that we didn't outprice ourselves when it came to having those conversations that we needed to have. Um, again, I've had a conversation with Dr. Zuckman and I'll give him the remainder of my time, um, to address it just a bit.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Harris. Uh, first, I want to say thank you to Mr. Harris as well as, um, the rest of the board, Chair Mickens Murray and others for your continued support. With our technology needs. Um, as Mr. Harris said, I think we have, um, we, we have the full support of, uh, Chief How, Superintendent House and, and others to. Ensure that if, uh, if, if our estimates are, are off and the enhancements we're seeking to make, uh, this year and next year. We have a little, uh, wiggle room and can, uh, through some additional financial review processes, add as necessary, just as, uh, costs increase. So I think we're gonna be okay here. I do really appreciate the amendment and just your continued leadership, Mr. Harris. And your support, uh, members of the board as we continue our work to strengthen our infrastructure.
I, that's, that's Dr. Zuckman.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to recommend the amendment?
We're withdrawing it.
You're withdrawing it. Okay, sorry. Um, so thank you for that clarification. Um, I wanted to, uh, as we get ready to round out this discussion, I wanted to go. Go back and make sure that we have the vote count correct for the first, um, discussion we had. This was on bullying support prevention and intervention. So any, can you read back the vote count, please? Um, and just make sure it's correct, uh, Rain, uh, with where you landed.
Right, I had, um, Mrs. Adam Stafford abstain, Mrs. Route oppose. And then I had, um, Rain, I'm sorry, Ms. Rivera Forbes. And Mrs. Mickens Murray that, um, said yes.
Rain, is that, uh, Ms. Rivera Forbes, is that correct?
Yes, I was in favor.
You were in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Harris was in favor as well? Okay, because I thought that you mentioned that you wanted to, that your vote was, that you opposed. When you asked to change this earlier?
No, this was not to be opposed. This was to make sure that my guess was recorded.
Yes, was recorded. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so then that motion does pass. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, uh. Wrap up here. So thank you to Chief Howell and your team for your diligence and for an excellent and informative meeting. I want to thank everyone in attendance for this meeting. Um, the next steps, we're going to follow up, uh, from items from our December twentieth and this January fourteenth meeting. They're going to be posted on Board Doc. Board Docs, the final budget session will be held tomorrow at five and seven P M respectively, respectively. Please note that the public hearing, um, will be before the work session. Uh, the public comment registration is still open if you would like to provide testimony. Um, Board, uh, Dr. Miller, did you have a comment?
Did, I was trying to raise my hand before you started wrapping, but I just wanted to thank you for revisiting this and I wanted to thank my colleagues. For supporting this really important initiative. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so, um, again, um, thank you to everyone for a great meeting and may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I submit.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at seven thirty-four P M. Thank you so much, everyone.
Uh, Adam Stafford, I just want to commend you. This was a great meeting. Thank.